Good evening, and welcome to the fifteen October version of the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board. We have three members here this evening from the board, so we have a core, which is great. We'll begin with that attendance, Mike, George, and myself. It's been several, we've, I think, missed two in a row without an agenda, thanks Nadia. Do you know if we're caught up on minutes?
I did reach out to the secretary and had not heard back from her for the latest revisions.
I think we're, I think we're one behind.
I think, I think we're only, it's September third.
I think we have the nine, three minutes. Are we missing those?
Missing, uh, two from August, I think. So, so why don't we just take, take that as an action?
Yeah, the last ones I saw were from August, I believe.
From August, okay.
You think we're okay?
Yeah, we just have the third, right?
That we're missing?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think we're just missing one, yeah.
That's, that's what I thought.
Just the one, yep.
The most recent, but I could be wrong. You know, old folks, you know, routinely, they tend to fade off.
What? Did you say something?
Makes my point. So, we have three items on the agenda this evening. The first one is number two five zero nine zero one for one twenty-five North Street. I should preface it by saying they're all initial reviews, no public hearing this evening. We'll see if we, type of a package we have. Is there someone here from one twenty-five North Street? Could you tell us what, what you have in mind?
Well, good evening. My name is Andrea Rolieri, and though most people do know me as Andy, and I'm currently serving as the volunteer board president for the Kenny Bunkport Historical Society. We're here tonight to request a site plan preliminary approval for the construction of a new archive and research center. The building is essential to protecting the individual and collective memories of our community. Our current archive is in the multipurpose room at Pasco Center, which is one twenty-five North Street. That space was never designed or intended to be an archive storage facility, and it's now completely full. More importantly, it lacks the proper systems needed to preserve historical materials. It lacks fire suppression, light control, there's no regulation of humidity, temperature, air circulation, and these are all critical for the long-term care of the collection. And it's, especially in its current state, it's difficult to access any of the collection when we're trying to answer research requests. The new archive building will provide state-of-the-art, compact storage systems in a secure, climate-controlled environment dedicated to preservation and long-term storage. It will not be open to the general public. It is a storage facility, a really nice storage building, essentially, with all the proper conditions that we need to carefully care for the collection. Instead, the adjoining, what we're calling the research office, will be open to the public, and that serves as a place where visitors can meet with the historian, many of you probably know Sharon Cummins, and any interns, researchers that are working with us also will share that space. Once the new facility is open, complete, then that multipurpose space in Pasco that's currently filled with all of our stuff will become an exhibition and meeting space, which was actually its original intent and very first use it ever had. For the Historical Society, this is a transformative project because it ensures that the Kenny Bunkport's story is preserved, protected, and accessible for us and for generations to come. We've planned in the ability to grow, and even though our board are volunteers, and it constantly changes as most boards, this will be a constant that we know will last into the future. So, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Excellent.
We did get some questions, I guess around four o'clock today, we received some last-minute comments, which I'm assuming we'll address next.
Yeah, we should touch on those, but first let me just ask, does anyone from the board, from their initial read, have any questions? Mike?
Uh, yeah, I was just trying to follow on the application. The different numbers down on the bottom of, I guess, page one, where it looks like percentage of lot occupied by buildings, we've gone up there. Then, I guess the proposed is for the percent occupied impervious parking. Why did that drop down so much? Is that just proposed new, or is that proposed total, or?
Mike, can you put the mic closer to you?
Sorry. I was just trying to follow those numbers and what they meant, I wasn't sure.
I would say that, I'll try to get in my brain what the impervious and non-impervious regulations are.
Oh, it's basically the footprint of the structure, and then any drive or walkways, porches, patios.
That's only in shoreline zoning.
It's only on shorelands, so here.
So, it's just buildings for lot coverage.
And I believe work classified as an industrial area or commercial.
So, then, existing and proposed, how did we go down if it's just buildings? Unless that's the addition, just the addition of six hundred and sixty, or eight hundred and sixty square feet.
Maybe it's because the new building is going on where that parking area used to be.
But he's saying it's only buildings.
I, I think it's possible, and I'm happy to, to talk to you about this as well. It's possible that it's just a misinterpretation of the question.
That's what I was thinking, it just, the, the numbers didn't seem to follow what I expected, so I, I didn't think they, I wasn't sure what the requirements were, but I don't know. I go from twenty-four eleven down to eight hundred and sixty if I'm putting another building on.
The fact that it says eight hundred and sixty square feet new walkway, I assume that means that the new walkway will be eight hundred and sixty square feet. Is that, does that sound right to you?
But don't you, don't you have the building occupied by, or is that just other?
It does say other impervious, parking, walkways, et cetera.
Maybe you have to add the twenty-four eleven to it.
But, but again, like Galen said, this, it's not in shore, the lot isn't in shoreline, so the percentage of walkways and such, it's not really important to us.
It's not gonna be a...
And if I could just add, at this point in time, well, part of our desire to come here tonight was to get, at the very least, a preliminary sort of understanding that we could proceed with this project. Because for us, if we know we can proceed with it, we're starting a major capital campaign. In other words, everything we do, obviously, is supported by grants and capital campaigns. So, if we know we can proceed, then our next step will be to engage an architect, engineering, go for estimates, get construction drawings completed, in other words, the full phase. But we didn't want to engage an architect, for instance, at this phase, pay that out, and then find out we couldn't do this in the first place. I mean, that's, that is sort of the crux of it. When it comes to the walkways, right now, there are actually very, there's not really a sidewalk there, and we project there probably wouldn't be in the end because the archive isn't a building that the public will walk, like, to.
It looked like it was actually connected.
It'll take you to the front doors of the new entry. And right now, most of it is a little bit of asphalt and gravel.
Right.
Where, where, the proposed building is now asphalt and gravel?
No, it's, it's, it's just grass.
Why, why, why is this before the planning board?
Uh, because they're increasing their floor area of a, a non-residential use.
Non-residential use?
Yep.
It's not non-conforming?
No.
It's just a non-residential use?
It's not non-conforming, but it's a conditional use, is what I'm, is that?
So, there's, there's a couple of things here, you have conditional use, yes, but you also have any kind of, any construction that's not residential has to go through a site plan review process, which they're obviously doing a new construction of this archival wing.
I think that's consistent with, with it being conditional.
Right, yeah, it's all, all included, yeah.
All right, all included.
You haven't seen one of those along.
Right, and then, and then going forward, any change to that?
Yeah.
So, so, Mike, did you?
Well, it was just if, I guess, I guess, if Nadia could just go through with them and make sure that the numbers and the things that we have in the, in the application are per, per, because it just didn't seem to be adding up to me. Like, the volume expansion, I thought we should have a number there for the proposed.
The only thing I would, I would say is, again, how's that information going to be helpful for the application? They're not in shoreline zoning, they're not...
So, it's not, so it should just, that whole thing should be NA then, because it's not a shoreline?
Yeah, that, that section is usually used for thirty percent expansion to make sure that the volume and the floor area calculations are, are meeting the intent of the ordinance of less than thirty percent, because you have to compare volume and floor area. That's why you have those two sections. I would more focus on your lot occupied by buildings, that section right there should be correct. We can make sure that section is right, because that is important for us for lot coverage purposes.
If you agree, though, with, with Mike, that if, if we're not, if it's not important, then it should say that it's not important.
Right, right.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can work with them on revising that application.
So, I can follow up with you and we can talk about it.
Then, the, so paved areas are out, but what about parking? Because the other one here that hit me with parking is, I know a couple, oh, once every month or so, there's a musical venue there.
That's held at the Townhouse School, that's, that's... That's the other property that we own.
Oh, it's a different lot?
It's a completely different lot.
Oh, I didn't appreciate that either.
Both lots are like, almost like triangles.
Yes.
And then they join in a very small piece at the sidewalk. So, the Townhouse School has the parking for the music venues. This building, we...
Yeah, that was my point, or not.
But this building, actually, we don't, we're not even adding more people to try to explain what we're doing. Essentially, when the archives and the office that Sharon occupied all left the Townhouse School when that construction was going on, it all landed inside that one room at Pasco Center. So, even though we're saying it's a research office, we're actually moving Sharon's workspace to a new space, just so that she's in a dedicated area. And then interns that we have come in seasonally in the summer because we get a grant, and we might have some person come in and just digitize records. They're not, we only have one historian that we employ, and that's Sharon.
Sharon, yeah.
Yeah, staff didn't have any concerns about the parking for this property. It has a large driveway, and as, as you said, that, you know, there was no proposed expansion of, like, employee use, really, so they certainly are well within the parking needs.
And if, and I wasn't sure if the building was going in part of the parking area, but it sounds like it's going in the grass area, so it wouldn't be losing space.
No, you're not losing spaces, because of the way it's offset. It literally avoids where people might park now.
Is it, I, I haven't studied the large map, is it clear where the parking is currently? The parking that we're not expanding?
I think it's very clear on the site plan, it's, it's a very grassy lot, and so the parking area is very clearly gray compared to the, the green.
And you're not increasing number of employees?
No.
My, my only concern, like with Mike, is make certain the numbers add up, and, because when it does come before the board, that's one of the things that we are looking at. And be certain to include the outlined buildings when you're calculating the amount of square footage you've got.
Okay.
Those, those buildings are part of, of the property.
In other words, the barn and the small shed and the blacksmith shop.
Blacksmith shop, yeah.
They will all add into that, but on its surface, I really don't, there's nothing that jumps out at me that I think that I would have any issue with when it comes before the board.
Okay.
Mike, did you, did you finish?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good for now? I'll just finish with a couple of questions on that application that I, I know needs to be tuned up. What zone is this in?
It's in the free enterprise zone.
It, it should say that on the application, okay? And just in general, when you look at it, lot size is one point four acres, I assume, is what the units are there, and so on. It just looks like, when it says percentage of lot occupied by buildings, it should say percent, what percentage, not how many square feet, or both of them, that's all.
Okay.
That, that attention would be... Oh, I'm talking to the Historical Society. I'm worried about, we look at this, and we all say, well, yeah, we got enough, we understand it here at this meeting, but this goes into the record, so I just want the record to...
And the...
And we'll have a new archive, and that copy of that document will be in that new archive.
It's a circular argument, to be all circular arguments.
Similar, they have type of sewage disposal, none. There has to be some.
It's a septic system that's currently there that satisfies the existing building.
I think that's probably just a misreading of the checkboxes.
Nadia, do you want to go through the staff comments to say, are there any that, that...
Sure, so, my first comment about the, the lot line dimensions, I don't see that being a huge issue, they did mark the setbacks, but whenever there's something that's not in line with what is in the ordinance as a submission requirement, I just like to flag it. So, I don't actually, I don't have any concerns about that specifically, especially since what I'm hearing is that we will receive a more full application down the road, which may include more detailed plans.
But there's, there's nothing to that that would stop the planning board from approving, I think?
I, I don't believe so, no.
I don't, I don't see either.
None, none.
Okay.
Um, the, my other comment about the wastewater system, it sounds like you're not adding any more employees, but just wanted to confirm that you're all set with your septic system, given the increase in space?
And that's something we're verifying, too.
Okay.
Quite frankly, we've been waiting for Nest Company, Mr. Nest, I guess, to, for almost six months. I was gonna say he's backed up, which I shouldn't say about a septic company, but needless to say, he is not. We're, we're still waiting for him, because we even want to just know for sure what we've got.
Great, and then, I have a comment about the lighting, which, again, sounds like it will come further down the road, and, you know, the board deals with lighting frequently, where you just put a note on that any construction should conform with chapter two forty-five, so.
Will conform.
Will conform, yes. So, this is a pretty common comment that you see. And then my last comment is just, when we have someone from a board representing, we just like to see some kind of documentation that, you know, maybe minutes from a board meeting where they elected you as the president, or some kind of documentation that...
Well, I did bring on our website the board of directors and the profiles of each of us, because I wasn't sure how to prove I was who I was.
Sure.
And, and what I volunteered to do, which at times makes me wonder why I volunteered to do it, but needless to say...
We have openings on the planning board if you want to...
No, this is enough, maybe after I get through the lot coverage calculations, maybe?
So, I, those are the only comments that I have, so nothing, nothing pressing. You know, and we reviewed it with the department heads, too, nobody had any outstanding comments. Pretty straightforward project.
Will you need verification, I mean, through board notes of when I got elected, or is it suffice to say that our public information is enough to prove who I am?
Yeah, usually official minutes are what, what they need to show, yep.
Official minutes, okay, then we'll, we'll get minutes pulled from a couple of years ago.
Yeah, great, that's fine.
The most recent one that shows.
Most recent, yeah.
And, and you can just...
Oh, any that say that when I, when I start a meeting, in other words, it just verifies that I'm...
Yeah, or when they elected you.
Okay, that's a couple of years ago, okay.
And is, is the board comfortable with just getting that digitally? Do you not, you don't need paper copies?
Absolutely.
Perfect, so if you could just email me a copy, that'd be it.
Regarding the lot line dimensions, I, I just want to make sure, page seven, I think that has in the application packet. We can see if they can give us a unshaded black version, but I think the lot line dimensions are there, it's just very hard to read.
Okay.
So, I think they're covered there, they just...
Yeah, we pulled, when I got this, this afternoon, that question. We went back to the original deed copy that's in there, popped it up in our CAD system, and we can add those dimensions to that drawing, if you'd like, that has the setbacks and everything on it.
Yeah, it's just, it's black for some reason. I don't know if it's just the scanned copy, but I, I do see there's dimensions when I zoom in. I do see there's a little bit of faded.
Yeah, no, that's, that's unusual, that it looks like that as a PDF that came in, because it's actually clear.
It's fine, yeah.
Yeah, we, we'll resend that, and maybe I'll check with you to see if it's still coming in shaded.
Great, perfect.
But we can also put those dims on that other sheet that shows the setbacks, if that helps.
Okay, great.
Right, so, just to close this out, the initial review shows that there's a few items, mostly clerical in nature, that are, that are absent from the application. Do you think that this is something we want to continue? Or do you want to say that the application is complete? It's not complete?
I would say that since we're looking at this as a preliminary, you wanted to get a feel of what we were doing. If you engage an architect and you're waiting for septic companies, it sounds like you don't want to get into a time constraint, where we have approved this, and all of a sudden the clock starts running, and you have things happen.
Yeah, we, I guess our goal is to know we can proceed with this because if we couldn't for any reason, we don't want to, you know,
Got it.
start out with design fees to something that we can't do, because literally, we're about, we're sort of in the soft phase.
So, I think from a preliminary standpoint, I don't see any problems with this. If this came to us and everything was in order, I would say, yeah, it's good to me.
Right, I think you want to go through this process sufficient that we do have a public hearing, and you hear from the public if there's any objections that we, that you don't anticipate, you want to know about them now. So, so I'd be fine with saying this is complete if the other members, you want to wait?
No, I'm fine with it being complete, and just the clerical type things taken care of between now and then.
Before the next meeting, we, we'd want you to sit down with Nadia and...
The only question, I guess, there is, does it start a clock that's gonna put them in a box?
That type of term.
So, so, this is the thing they have to think about, is, you know, think about when your architect, how long it's going to take to, to engage with them. So, after they have the public hearing, and if they approve, approve it with the finding of facts, your finding of facts are good for a hundred and eighty days once they've been approved by the planning board. So, the clock ticks that you have to start submitting a building plan within a hundred and eighty days. The planning board can grant another extension for another hundred and eighty days, so that's, that's the, really, the time clocks that you're dealing with here. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
As long as you're comfortable with that, that's...
Yes, because now, if, knowing if we can say we have a preliminary at least, then we know we can reach out now and contact architects to see who's interested and whether they can start right now. We've internally done the pre-design, which are the drawings that you've seen, because we needed to calculate how much physical storage we needed of compact storage to scale the building. And so, we've sort of done that pre-design so that we can inform the architect of what we need right from the get-go.
Yeah.
So, what, what we're saying is, is that as far as our initial read at this, no one in this room has an objection to moving forward, but of course, we haven't had any public input, and that non-objection is predicated on, and, and we would clean up the application before the next meeting and public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
And the, the next meeting is actually three weeks away, because we have a five Wednesday month here, so it'd be November fifth.
Okay, and would we need to have engaged with the architect between now and then?
You don't, you don't necessarily need to engage the architect. What's, I think, more important is to make sure your application is complete, that you have all those outstanding items.
Any of these things that we'll talk about and cover any of that, okay.
My, my concern was, if you're thinking of engaging an architect this time next year, and you're gonna run the cap, campaign first, and then this is a two- or three-year project doubt, you might want to think about when we start that clock, too.
Yeah, no, I think we're compressing it.
Ready to go?
Okay.
We're, yeah, I wouldn't say we're ready to go. We, I would like to find somebody who wants their name right on the building.
You bet.
But...
I nominate Mr. Mike White. But I, I'll make a motion that we accept this application with the modifications to, or updating of the existing numbers.
Did, did, did we find it complete?
We find it complete.
I agree.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
So, a public hearing scheduled for November fifth, ready with? Great.
Okay.
And, and we'll, we'll have an updated application in advance of that.
Yeah.
Yes, hope so.
Well, or, or we'll delay the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Stephanie Francis, I represent the Breakwater Inn, and...
So, Stephanie, let me just interrupt to say, you're, you're gonna talk first about one twenty-seven?
Correct.
Okay, and that's number two five one zero zero one is our application number. Now, I'm not remiss in reading that.
Okay. So, for one twenty-seven Ocean Ave, Breakwater Inn, it's Oldell, there's four spa rooms in a gym currently that aren't being used, and we are not using the rooms for those, that, for spas. Let me move it, sorry. So, we're trying to change them over to four rooms, for additional rooms at the hotel. We're not doing any changes outside of the building, it's all just on that second floor.
And as, as before, as with the previous application, if I understand it, this is before this board, not for any shoreline issues or the like, but because it is an expansion of a conditional use, a change to a conditional use?
It's, yeah, it's mostly internal, what you see in front of you is an internal change of the floor area for those uses, and so that's what you're verifying, to make sure that they're in compliance with all the performance standards of the town ordinance.
Because it's a conditional use, that's why.
Correct, yep, yep.
And the, both lots are entirely within shoreline, so when we, I, we have received some updated parking information from the applicants, which I'll review, which I will review, you know, following this meeting, but how the parking shakes out will kind of determine if shoreline becomes relevant at all to the, the proposed project. But if, without thinking about parking, correct, shoreline doesn't really, doesn't really factor in because it's all internal renovations.
Fair enough, but, but if you're, if you're changing the number of guest rooms, you're, you're changing the requirement for the number of parking spaces that are required because it's a hotel, right?
Correct, and that's, so that's what we'll need to review, is whether or not the parking standards are being met.
For me, there's some sort of mass balance going on, because you needed so many for the way it is currently configured, and then with the new configuration, does that number go up, go down? And then I don't know about the size of the parking spots, were they grandfathered from the old, the original for their number, and therefore, the new, if they need more, they have to be the current size or whatever, like we ran into on Langford Road. And so, but I, the whole parking thing is blank to me because... And so, but I, the whole parking thing is blank to me because I don't have anything that I can look at.
And I'll review the parking standards and with the updated plans submitted and.
One of my concerns about the parking is that it's one business, but they're two separate properties, and each property has different parking requirements.
They do, but the ordinance does allow for shared parking facilities when they're in a certain vicinity of each other. So they can do that, and that's what the arrangement was in the past. It was in the findings of fact for the Stripers Restaurant location, which is the 135, am I?
131.
Sorry, sorry.
133. 133 location, they had an arrangement where they would valet park the people who were visiting the restaurant to send them over to. Yeah.
Just so long as that's all clarified and a table or something so that it matches up. If anybody ever wanted to sell the property separately, then everybody knows where the parking is.
I mean, we went through this with, was it Altamar or?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that, and I just, that to me seemed to be the big issue with this one.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, it was the only issue I could really come up with.
Do you have any more?
No.
Like Paul's mind.
No, I think that was the big one I hit on this one.
No, just the parking.
Yeah, the park, so you say just the parking, basically, I think telling you, I don't have to put words in your own mouth, but is that it's not clear to us what your parking plan is.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so we're looking for that.
And I did receive.
You're giving me the look that says, what do you mean you're looking for? It's right in front of you. That's the only reason I'm trying not to dance around it, I just.
No, I'm.
Offensively clear, but just to be clear.
No, I'm John, INC Learn, I worked on this building, buildings since 2004, I think. And I don't know whether you got a copy of the memo, but I did do a memo in 2011 with the parking, and. I don't know why the retail wasn't included because this was a request from the planning board in 2011, however I did it. And so the way I was looking at it was, we're taking out the spa, which was requiring 14 spaces, and now we're adding four hotel rooms that require four spaces, so we've gained a net 10 spaces. It's just to try and balance it out without having to do a survey and.
John, if you can show that in a column.
Yeah.
Here's what it was.
I'm seeing, he's talking to this, but it's, the words aren't, the words aren't coming across to me.
Yeah. So this, in 2011, you got outlined what it was.
What is the spa building?
Oh, that's 130, yeah, so this is, the spa building is 127.
That's 127, okay. And that is going.
That is losing the 2,700 square foot of what we called retail was the way it was.
That's a retail, okay.
They wanted to call the spa area retail as a way to, in the ordinance, there wasn't anything that said, what's a spa?
So what, so I'm looking at, I guess now at the 2011 memo, and it has, the spa building has 2,700 square feet of retail.
For the, this is when it was going from hotel rooms to the spa rooms.
It was coaters, that wasn't a condos before that?
It is a condo.
Okay.
It condoed after the hotel.
Okay.
But so.
So I can tell from that 2011 memo that you're certainly clear on the type of breakdown that we're looking for, right? So if I go from that 2011 to today, in fact, what's the Breakwater Inn, that's 131 or 133?
133, yeah, 133.
No, Breakwater Inn is 127.
No.
Stripers.
You just said that spa.
But we're going back to 2011, back then it was Schooners and the Breakwater, and then they made it all Breakwater for, to confuse everyone.
Because I'm confused, let's try this.
Yeah.
If I could have a breakdown of what it is today.
Yep.
Got this many spaces for this many applications, and a map that shows, here's the buildings, and here's vaguely where those spaces are, or maybe exactly where those spaces are.
Maybe people do aerial, I don't, there isn't a.
Aerial work.
You don't have the sir, I don't have a plan, I don't know whether, one had to have been done at some point.
Aerial will show all the.
There's a property, in the property file, there is a copy of the, one of the applications that has the designated parking spaces laid out.
Yeah, we have designate, I have designated for 133.
Okay.
Which is. It, we, is, I do have that.
Okay.
You can see.
If we've got a pretty good view of what it is today.
Yeah.
And if it's an aerial, that's fine, if it's a sketch, that works, where are these spaces? Are they in front of the building, are they the ones back behind the buildings, is that spot there? And then what the proposal is, I understand that you proposed to reduce the number of spots. That's going to be pretty easy, but I just want to get an idea, where are they being reduced from, and everybody else is still coming out even, because I don't have a visual look.
I didn't hear they were going to reduce the number of spots, I heard they reduced the requirement.
Reduced the requirement?
Correct.
Right. So.
That is what you.
So it's going to stay the same physically.
If you need 60 lot spots, and you have 60 spots, there's strike for strippers.
Yeah.
You've got 60 spots, and now you only need 50 spots, mathematically, it seems like you probably have enough spots. You want to know where they are.
Okay.
Is this the space that's out and back that's shared with the commercial peer?
Well, technically, it's not shared with, the municipal wharf has its own parking.
Yeah, it's separate. It's separate.
It's a totally separate.
Is it separate in ownership or is it physically separate?
It's physically separate and it's separate in ownership.
There's like a curb.
Yeah.
So I think it would be useful for me to know what that D mark is, that's all, picture or something.
Yeah, you can see what, you can pull off of the aerial.
Is there some public parking there also?
Just at municipal wharf.
Just the municipal wharf, okay.
I mean, it's public from the point of view that if you're going to the hotel or any of the stores, but.
And there are other retail involved, but those are condos within this building as well.
Correct.
Okay, just so everybody knows, because then if someone decides to sell the property separately, then who gets the parking in the divorce?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That's the only thing I see.
Yeah. John, you're saying that the fact that we're reducing the number, proposing to reduce the number of required spaces, sort of takes you out of the whole issue of, oh, anything new that you add has to be on a certain size and so on.
But then 10 years from now, something were to change in the property, someone would say, well, where are those net spaces?
Of course. No, I think your idea about having a map that says, here's the ones we're talking about.
This is how we got to.
By the way, here's the requirement, there's a table.
Yeah, these spots go to this spot.
I'm still having trouble, and I know you'll fix it, with what's the number and what's the name of the property today? It doesn't have to be that way either from now.
Yeah, I'll get the address on it.
You said in the memo, at this time, the Breakwater would like to convert the spa space to four new keys. Is a key, is that lingo for rooms?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, thanks. Any other questions?
No.
No.
So on 127, what we're saying is, is that this is not a complete application yet, it's absent the parking information that we need. That's the only thing that we're worried about, except I would like to give, again, Nadia the opportunity, is there anything in the staff memo that you want to highlight?
Sure, so the biggest thing was the parking, which, like I said, I'll review. We also did have one note from the wastewater department director that since you're increasing technically the number of bedrooms, this is kind of standard practice, we just need confirmation from the sewer department that they are good with capacity. That's pretty easy to get, they.
So I already, I emailed you back, and I did make notes on the application.
Perfect.
And Peter did, I talked to, he's the operation manager, and Peter said he was.
Great.
All set, and he said he spoke to somebody yesterday, so.
Okay, perfect, I've been out of the office all afternoon, so I apologize if I haven't seen it yet, but I'll get that updated in the planning board file, and then we should be good to go. That was the only other comment that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So now I'll confuse you on the next one.
Right, and I'll start.
Is that?
Yes.
Yeah. Same. The only thing I'll caution you on the beginning is, the application says this is number 133 Ocean Ave, and yet the cover page says it's for 131 Ocean Ave, and the return address is for 131 Ocean Ave. So I wondered about why I was confused.
So it is 131.
The application needs to be corrected.
It is 131, correct.
And if we put some property cards there.
I'll pull up.
131 does not exist in our property database.
It's 133.
It is 133.
I figured that it might be something like, because it's a separate house on the lot, I figured maybe it just has its own little number on there, I wasn't sure.
That's what I assumed, and I, because I took over for somebody else that was.
It should align with, my opinion, with the property card.
Okay.
Yes, 133, we can stick with.
Yeah, 133 is the property card.
Cool. So that we don't confuse the historical society.
Because they'll be here long after us.
So for this.
Please.
All right, so for this one right now, it is a, we are utilizing it as staff housing, and we want to take it from staff housing and convert it into a guest house for like a wedding party, so they can have their entire family there. And turn it into a five-bedroom, four-bath. And a one key.
So, okay, so it would be like a rental or a hotel room, but it's actually a facility suite? That makes sense.
Yes.
So it would just be being rented to one person at one party at a time?
Like the wedding party, if it's the bride's family or.
That's what we figured, but just wanted to check.
It's a master, master suite.
Going back to parking requirements, the requirement is driven by the number of bedrooms.
Guest rooms.
Guest rooms.
Yeah, so same parking problem, we need to review the plans and make sure that parking shakes out.
No, I'm just saying, there needs to be five spaces. One space for five bedrooms. I don't think that's, that doesn't make any sense.
One key.
It's one key.
So?
Per key?
I don't think that's what it says.
I'll pull up the off-street parking.
They're not going to rent these rooms individually, they go as a group.
Yes.
Right, and they're not going to, I'll come in one car.
I've been to the circuit. While you're checking that, I've got, maybe it's my packet, but in the application for 131 or 133, I've got a D for 127.
There you go.
And that's been confusing me. I don't have a D for 131.
Great.
Mine must be D.
No, no, mine's the same way. I didn't catch it.
And I don't know if that includes the various parcels, there's the Riverside parcel.
There's all sorts.
Parcel two.
We can certainly look at the deed, it does have multiple parcels, the owner of record is 127 Ocean Ave LLC, which might be the hangup. I'll be honest, deeds are not really my area of expertise, but I can certainly check in with our assessor and get her opinion on the deed.
We knew you might have good deeds, huh?
So point of clarification, the chairman is correct, it's one space per sleeping room. So I don't know.
That's what I had read earlier.
That's not guest room.
That's 246.9. Gee. For the record. You can take that, if it's useful, no, okay, you got it. Thanks, Peter.
Yeah.
It would be a similar request here than saying how many spots we have currently assigned to this building facility, and then where would we be going with the new one? Will we be going up, down, or sideways?
We take the ones you saved from.
It adds up.
Sounds like Bob Ray.
Sounds like the mass balance should work, we just need a table or something showing us that it does it and where they're at.
Will that, what I sent you justify or?
I'll let you know, I haven't reviewed it yet, so after I review, I'll, if, if I have follow-ups, I'll let you know.
I know when I looked at the property file for the, both these properties, that when they went in front of the planning board, they took a holistic view of the parking situation for both premises because there was the shared parking apparatus. Yes. Yes. So we do have them, we have all those files, so I mean, we do have historical documents to go off of.
Well, then that's just.
Use those as a.
Yeah, comparison.
Changes to the owner, you know, to the.
Right.
Why this supports.
Good luck following it all, but it's there.
No, we don't need the whole thread.
Because I think the problem is they called them both Breakwater, and then it just starts blurring and, yeah.
Right, it's Breakwater, but it's all LLC, but it's also 127 Ocean Ave.
Almost like they have the same deed.
But it's got two parcels, and I'm wondering if they have the same deed.
Yeah. Let's sort that as well. So the deed issue and the parking clarification.
In a map.
Like I said, I'll double-check the deed just to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Because it does mention two parcels, so if those two parcels match these, then.
If they line up with the property.
How about a sidewalk?
No. Don't joke about that.
We had a great sidewalk in 2011 where we had to park cars where the spots are shown.
Right.
I do have photo.
Yeah, we have photos of that, yeah.
We have photos of it.
Wow.
In the grassy area.
So they're all behind the existing strippers.
Right.
They're all, that's technically where the parking is.
Where the raterondaxes are.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's parking.
Okay.
Just depends on where you're parking.
I might try that someday.
Again, Nadia, is there anything in the memo you want to highlight, other than the parking and the deed?
Yeah, so this is just a clerical error, the number of bedrooms and bathrooms listed in the cover letter is different than what's shown on the architectural plans.
And I did update that as well in that email I sent you.
Great, then that's the only other, the only other important comment that I had. Everything else, after I review the site plans submitted, I'll let you know if I have any more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Quick one.
That's okay.
They probably have something else for us, John. We have openings on the board, John, do you want to?
I'm sorry, you can.
More likely it's.
I can get you in the deed.
I'm voting for slow down, Kenny Muck. He's got my move.
Slow down.
Yeah, for Nadia.
So that concludes the three items on your agenda. Galen, I know you sent a note earlier that said you had some additional information. I know one of the things was, David already polled us about next Thursday, I think all three of us are saying we can maybe.
On my calendar.
Yes.
Somebody to carry me in and out.
The 23rd.
You can show up on Zoom.
Yes, yes.
You can show up on Zoom.
Yeah.
It's hardly not as much fun.
Yeah. It shouldn't be a long.
Micro, it's pretty.
Yeah. It shouldn't be that long a process. A few housekeeping rules, I did go back in my emails, we did get from Lynn Capitan, the recording secretary, she did give us the August 20th and the September 3rd. So I forwarded that, but I wanted to project them, just so we can read them and approve them tonight, if that's okay, so we don't keep missing more minutes from a housekeeping perspective.
Let me just pull those up quickly.
Yeah, we put them up on the, behind you.
I know I've been out of it.
Oh, Christmas, yes.
I don't remember the snow.
It's getting used to what's coming, of course.
I'd rather not get used to it, and we have a nice summer visit. Was I here, I was here, I guess I have to pay attention.
This is your August 20th?
I wasn't here for this one.
Oh, God, I wasn't. Mr. Lick, he rearranged the agenda.
He, George.
Not in your act.
George, you're a.
Yeah, oh, you want me to read through this? I'm reading over here. You want me to read in front? Yeah, oh, you want me to read through this? I'm, I'm reading over here. You want me to read in front of group?
No.
You don't, you don't read it aloud.
I don't think you have to read it out loud.
I rearranged it, yeah, I was looking at rearrange the agenda. Public hearing, I'm in the mic, and, and no questions for, no questions, bingo. And over the public hearing, over the public, prove the application, find the fact, happened, introduce the item, notice part of the hearing, receive the letter from.
We approved it, we approved.
Yes, we approved that, yes. At, after we received the letter, Apka, taking his present, the Walsh Engineering, right, right, right. And then they had a, they talked, and it was within the public hearing that they went across through all these issues. And, uh, did.
You sorted that, if I recall?
Sorted it all out. They, they, they used the public hearing to, to discuss it, and it worked out. They went through point by point.
How did, how did it end up?
It ended up that, uh, we, um, uh.
We approved it.
We approved it and we went by and signed it, and Mr. West kindly made a motion for adjournment, and we, uh, we were unanimous in that.
I, I did watch this afterwards, so I will agree that I approved the, I would approve these minutes.
I would approve the minutes. Yeah.
So three, three oh, we, we do approve these minutes. And what was the date on those again?
That was August twentieth.
Look at the other one?
And these are September third.
September third's up.
Oh, I'm here again. Mr. Francis Chair, Mr. West, Mr. Lipton, and, and, uh, we're going with Walsh. Previously Shoreland Stabilization, right, right, right. We're going three fifty-three, Stabilize Shoreland.
Just the one where DEP still had outstanding comments.
Yes, we had looked at this one before.
So this was, this was phase two?
Yeah.
What, what'd they do? They're backed up, it's on my name, what'd they say?
It's a effort to give us all a hundred dollars.
Okay. Did you take Bitcoin?
Oh, sure, sure.
Oh, yeah, step to there, right, right, right. I think.
So how did we end up? We continued the initial review?
Right.
And we have not received updates, so it is still continuing.
They were waiting on the state.
Yeah.
Yep.
Main DP, cause it could have changed their, their planned layout, so.
We went bath lane, that part's been done. I'm sure it's fine. Using the, the AI synopsis to encapsulate all this, it goes.
Ooh, Star Wars.
So the only, the only comment on the, if, if, when you're talking to, to Lynn.
Yeah.
The minutes do not need to be a transcription.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if that's why it takes her a long time.
Yeah, I'll tell her this.
It can be brought way up and, and really, yeah, we really.
Still out of bed.
Yeah.
In, in times gone by, having a transcription, you know, detailed minutes were probably useful, but.
We have a video.
Find a meeting, who watched the video?
So would you agree that you approve those minutes?
I would approve, but I make a motion to approve.
Three, three zero, yes, so they're approved as well.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Do we wanna talk Beryl, Beryl's Way or not?
Whoa, what was that?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just give you an update. You all received the letter from the Burls Way Homeowners Association. They sent you a letter requesting reimbursement from the developer's escrow account for, that was earmarked for paving. And so that was what was presented. I went to the town solicitor, the town solicitor advised us not to, to offer that reimbursement, because that is not what that, of, those funds were to be used for. Instead, the practice was supposed to occur was the HOA, was if they noticed that there was something in violation, they should have really contacted the town for us to do an inspection. And then if we saw that the stormwater management plan was out of compliance, we could have went to the developer and said, fix this.
Oh, real.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's, that's what should have happened as a practice, and, you know, the HOA, I'm, I'm assuming, you know, they, they really wanted to just try to take care of this issue. They knew it was a problem. According to their correspondence, the developer was not interested in fixing the, the issue. There's two sides to that story. So at this point, the town is not getting involved in, in that process. So the latest update I've heard, and again, we have not confirmed, but it's my understanding that the final coat has been completed for Burls Way, and this subdivision, just so everyone's aware, is back from two thousand seventeen, that timeframe. So it's been a long time, and I did have a conversation earlier this year asking when that was gonna get done, and they said this fall. So we need to confirm that the paving was done, and then we will go out to do an inspection from Acorn Engineering, who's our third-party inspector. If their report checks out that everything is good for the entire site for what was outstanding on the punch list, then we can release those paving funds from the escrow account. So that's the update on that.
In general, where would the planning board fit in that?
You, you all, normally, this is administrative function. We would normally handle this through, you know, we do have escrow, a lot of escrow accounts.
Yeah.
And so when there's stormwater issues or other challenges, we, we do, you know, keep usually them enforced.
All we did was approve the subdivision.
Right.
Yeah, but I, I think what I kinda took out of it was, we've been, at least in the last couple of subdivisions that I can remember, we've been very diligent in saying there needs to be a stormwater management maintenance plan. It needs to be included in the HOA agreement, even if it's draft or whatever, but making sure that that is documented in there going forward. And that, I, I don't know if that happened in two thousand seventeen or not, but I'm just thinking from our process, if, to prevent similar issues in the future, we have a, our process is covering this currently.
I think it underscores the importance of it. I agree with that. But I don't think, yeah, in, in general, I think we all looked at it and said, how does the planning board is, is empowered or authorized to do anything about adjudicating, or even have an opinion?
Right.
Well, the, the only duty that we have is, is one, to advise the town, the code office and/or the select board, when requested, about these type of issues, but we don't have the authority to, to rule on it or to dispense funds or, or anything like that. So if it was useful to have a public forum and to have the opinion of the board, then, then we, we certainly could have done that, but it's not in our charter to, to do anything but approve, approve with conditions or disapprove site applications.
For everything else.
I think that's just, twenty-third is your next meeting, that, just public hearing, that we need you all there for that.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
That we adjourn.
All those in favor? Oh, second, I would second it. Three oh.
Okay.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you all.
And six fifty-eight.